Open up December tenth, meeting of the Board of Selectmen with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any announcements?
Just wanted to, brief one, just to thank everyone involved with the first night. It was quite an event and they really do have to go fundraising for it and I think, I think this year's event is no different than any others, but they did, once again, a fantastic job.
Citizens' forum. Okay, I will go right to the license renewals. Everyone have the spreadsheet, run over it? We can do the motion in one.
I just want to note the changes that I told you, the Quaker Tavern is closed, right? And Cappy's is, Victualis is different. And I know it doesn't make any difference. And that was about it, I guess.
I think the Polish Hall got a different manager.
Polish Hall was, two different names also, but that might be that automatic entertainment.
That's the amusement one. Yeah, that's just the amusement one.
Yeah, right.
But I think that the one on the Polish Hall, he dropped out of all of it.
Oh, Mason?
Mm-hmm.
See?
Yes. He's still down here.
Well, at least we noted it, so it's down here.
Well, is there in fact a license for Quaker Tavern?
That's what should be pulled in.
Yes.
We issued one.
They were issued a license because the previous owner had the license, the liquor license, and it was transferred to Quaker, we issued it.
But they haven't utilized it for over a year.
This is true.
Okay.
This is true.
So it should be recalled again. I would think, I don't know. The ABC will handle it.
Right, and they have that public water problem.
Um, that won't affect their operation because I, we have a similar program with a similar kind of place in Douglas, in fact, I met with the owner and the DEP, at the DEP offices, and they said, no, they'll have to comply with the requirements, but they have, you know, substantial length of time to do that. The DEP is just now getting
involved.
Involved with all these wells that are in fact under the new regulations, public water supplies, but no one was aware of that fact for years. And they're trying to get that all together, but they're not shutting things down because they haven't met the what they do is they issue a notice of violation, of violation, and then you sit down with them and work out something. In the case of the establishment in Douglas, it's going to be probably a year and a half before they're in compliance. And that's okay with the DEP because they've been operating for years. Same thing with Quaker Tavern, you know, people.
Yeah, that was always running, no, yeah. It just hasn't been open, it hasn't been open for a year.
Yeah, but it's had, it's been operating for years and years and years.
Now, I saw, I don't know if it's a new development.
Usually doesn't matter, though.
Is there, is there statutory time where you have to open before it gets thrown back into the pool? Do you know what the top here is?
No, no, nothing, we're.
I think ABC is supposed to be notified. And they'll tell you what to do, like, right? But I don't know, I'd have to.
Because we have a local policy on issuing it, because we just went through that, last year we went through all of them. And I don't recall seeing a recall on it. But I think they have, they have a sign up front that says now hiring, so.
Not only that, they, they have a design for new septic system. And that's in the process of being, you know, completed, the design has been approved. So, we'll see.
Who did that design, you know?
It was in a, I don't remember the name of the company, they're not, somebody right local, but they have done things of that nature before.
Of that nature.
Restaurants.
Okay, so, just more make note of those.
What were the three?
Uh, it was Cappy's, Quaker Place, and Polish Hall.
Licenses can be revoked for cause. You know, if something comes up and you, you know, you can revoke it, but they have to be for cause and after a hearing.
I remember Paul coming in from Cappy's to change all this. All his licenses, I believe, they're under.
They did. Well, they did for the Polish Hall, too.
That's right. Yeah, he definitely did, I remember seeing the packet, with the packet.
Mm-hmm.
This just may be wrong, this may not have got updated. We can check.
Didn't get out of the conduit fast enough, no, it'll move right along.
So, do you want to alter the motion to, based on those three, or can we just move it forward as is? With the follow-up to, make sure it's issued to the on file.
Follow-up, Tracy, on record keeping, but as I said, the licenses are issued to the establishment, so.
That's what you said, informational?
Yeah.
So I'll move that the board approved the 2013 license renewals for current Victualis, class one, class two, class three, entertainment, automatic amusement device, and alcohol, as noted. In the spreadsheet dated twelve ten twelve, attached to the minutes, and made part of the official record.
Second? Which has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain because I have an interest in one of the companies that holds a liquor license.
All right, the Blanchard LDA is going to be passed over, didn't get, didn't get the paperwork in. Let's do, that's coming, all right, Sean, just didn't get it today?
Right. Harry and Bernasco and their attorney John Jewell have to go over our suggestions one last time, and we should have the final document. I told the group that your meeting again this week and then next Monday, so hopefully.
I reckon.
Is anyone here for citizens' forum?
Okay, then we'll just go right to the discussion on FY14 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You, the board should have before it a memorandum dated December sixth, having to do with the budget, the preliminary budget projection for 2014. We assembled this basically last Thursday, and looking at it, we took, we made a few assumptions going in, understanding, of course, this is entirely preliminary. Just, just a couple of things of note is, according to the publications that, and the communications that we're receiving from the MMA, the municipal, municipal agent, not agency, organization that basically looks out for the interests of cities and towns, the governor is pushing forward with a 1% reduction in unrestricted local aid. For us, that would be about $11,000, that would be a nine C cut, which if it happens, will happen sometime this year. We don't know when it'll be acted on or if it'll be acted upon, but that's, that's the first thing that we're seeing so far. So with that in mind.
They've just, this year, this calendar year, this fiscal?
This fiscal. So, our unrestricted general government aid would go down by a little over 11,000.
Not this fiscal year, the coming fiscal year.
No, 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 no.
The next, but they're going to make the announce, they'll make the announce.
This fiscal year. A nine, a nine C cut is an emergency cut that the governor is allowed to do in the case of extraordinary circumstance. So basically, it would come off of our third or fourth quarter distribution.
All right.
So, that, with the conference being in late January, where the governor will actually allow, announce his local, the local aid amounts as part of his proposed state budget, it left us trying to figure out exactly where to start. And whenever you're trying to do this, do this ahead of the governor's budget, it's always, it's, you're always speculating a little bit, so what we, what we did this time out is, we level funded chapter seventy, we took a 5% drop in the unrestricted local aid, which is about $58,000. So with those, with that assumption there, we started going through and we made the whole calculation, which I'll just go through fairly quickly here. You're starting with a tax levy base of twenty-one thousand six, twenty-one million sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven, with a five hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and nineteen, prop two and a half addition, new growth forecast by the assessor of 120,000. We are projecting a $48,350 interest payment on the remaining debt of the, of the, or the, the debt that has yet to be borrowed on the Uxbridge High School. We've borrowed 20, 20 million dollars so far, we have, we have basically around 23 that we're going to be on the hook for, so we forecast that off of the remaining $3 million payment. We won't know exactly what that borrowing is going to be until we, until we get to the end of the project and it's signed, it's basically signed off by DOE, but that's, that's what we're projecting at this particular point. Once again, a reduction of 5% of unrestricted general government aid, or 58,192. We're leaving the state charges level, local receipts are just about level with what we put on the 2013 recap, we didn't see any reason to raise or lower them. Assessor's overlay at 223,271, and cap case, levy cap space and miscellaneous adjustments set at about 100,000. We do that every year until we find it, until we finish up the entire budget process. At that point, revenue would total 37,734,034, an increase of 630,237. On the expense side, we level funded Norfolk Aggie, which is now in the general fund budget as of this year. We projected a, a increase for BVT of 8% or 132,357. Unknown as to what that'll be, we won't know until, until their budget comes out. The BVT debt expense, that is a solid number of $2,113, that decreases every year. A retirement system increase of 8% or 86,980. General debt service increase of 284,435, that had, that is associated with the borrowing having to do with the school fields, and that projected exclusionary payment as well, that we just, that we just talked about of the 48,000. Retiree health insurance, we're figuring 5% on Medicare plans for Medicare retiree, you know, Medicare eligible retirees, and 12% for retirees on non-Medicare plans, that comes to an increase of 327,217. Property liability insurance increase of 15% or 100,427. Workers' compensation increase of 15% or 33,843. And we actually believe that we can decrease the amount that we've transferred into the unemployment account every year from 50,000, which we did last year, back, down to 25,000. Prior to that, we were doing 15,000 a year. So based on this initial projection, we see an overall fixed cost increase of 938,146, dividing it by two through the revenue share agreement, we are left with, I'm sorry, before we do that, we have to, we have to offset the revenue increase, so we wind up having to split 344,778. The next stage of this is to split it up between the municipal departments and the school department. So, with the municipals, it's 172,389, less a forecast, or including a forecast increase of 61,824 to our health insurance for the municipal employees. That leaves a forecast budget reduction of 234,213. Unfortunately, the school department gets hit a little bit harder, they get the same 172,389 in general reductions, but they have an increase in their health insurance forecast at 526,946. Now, the reason they have that is, you might recall last year, we actually, or this year, we actually managed to decrease the overall health insurance budget, because the school used $265,000 of Ed Jobs grant money to offset their health insurance. So they paid for their health insurance through that, they got the benefit of the budget from that, but now they don't have the Ed Jobs money going into 14, and that is back in their budget plus their forecast increase, so it's almost a double hit. So, at that sta, at that point, the school has a forecast reduction right now of just under $700,000. Now, the whole thing to consider is, all of this is speculative at this particular point. We don't have the governor's budget, we haven't, we have not got our projected health insurance increases yet, all of these have placeholders. We'll be working that out in the next couple of months before we finalize the budget. But, until we do that, all we can say is, looking at this, it's not a good picture. On the municipal side, we, we do have some offset in the fact that we did pick up a pretty good increase to the budget this year, when we re-portioned the revenue share agreement, to have the veterans' agents' monies going directly to us, just like the school asked chapter seventy. So, we have, we have boistered the capital account a little bit, I believe we put, we put, we just put in over $80,000 at the Fall Town Meeting. There's, and there's some more money that can be transferred in, in the Spring Town Meeting, assuming that there, there are no issues with other, the other departments. However, an initial forecast says that that will pretty much be wiped out. So, on the municipal side, we probably have enough to cover much of this forecast deficit, but that's going to be about it. So it's going to be very, very hard for us to really do much more, aside from keep the budget fairly close to where it is with selected cuts here and there.
David, you said you got covered at 234, one is the cap budget, which we kind of earmarked at 100K?
Yep.
With the other 130 some odd?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, how do you think you have that covered?
We have it covered because we just moved in $83,000 into, into the capital fund. I had, what, what we do is, we put it, is, when we did the original projection, when, when it came in at the Fall Town Meeting, we wound up being just a shade over $190,000 ahead. Having to do, most of it had to do with the real, with the reallocation of the revenue share agreement, we also had savings in municipal healthcare, because our, our costs actually went down, and the governor's budget, or the final budget came in a little better than we had hoped for. That's the question that we're going to use, looking at 14, because the revenue share agreement looks at what you had in 13, and then apportions it going to 14, so, it's going to wipe out any gain we have this year, so the gear, the gain we have this year is going to be a one-time gain. And unless the budgets change drastically, next year, we, I, I was just doing the calculations just before the meeting, and I, and we'll just barely manage to get the $100,000 back in the capital, if we have to do the full budget reduction that we're forecasting here.
So, I'm, I'm still confused.
Yeah.
Apologize, if you guys understand this, but so the 234s is what we're short in the budget, expected, you know, with all things, with all things considered.
Yes.
But the statement you said, you think we'll be okay in finding that 234, or am I misinterpreting what you're saying?
No, you're, you're not far off from that, I mean, it appears that.
My question is, that 234 is found, is made up of?
It made, it's made up of the money that we got in FY13 through picking up the veterans' agent monies.
Money that we would, if, if we were not at a reduction, but we're at even, or at a surplus, we would
Correct.
Put into stabilization?
Um, no, we'd actually be using it for capital.
For capital, we would put into our capital fund for capital projects?
Correct.
Okay.
So, our capital fund is not going to increase next year, it's going to go back down to 100,000 based on this forecast.
And this year?
This year, there will.
If it was even, we would have put 234 plus the 100, we would have put over three, almost 300,000 in the capital fund?
Yes, for capital purposes.
Thanks.
David, how many people we have on non-Medicare plans?
On non-Medicare plans? We actually have quite a few retirees that are on non-Medicare plans. I actually have a whole, I have a breakdown in my office, I could, I can sort, you know.
I'll get it some.
I can get it for you.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question in reference to wastewater transfers and revenue? The health benefits, retirement, and Medicare?
Yes.
And on the water fund, health benefits, retirement, and Medicare, the same, and the same on the cable? Now, all these benefits are being paid by a selective audience, which is kind of being taxed to pay for town employees. Why isn't that in general government, why is it in the enterprise account?
Okay, well, all right, there's a couple of things that you have to look at this, with this. When it comes to the budgeting purpose, we pay everything out of the general fund. Every part of the, every, the health insurance for every employee and every retiree who, who are employed by the town in any, in any way, shape, and form, are raised in the general fund. Okay, so that being said, now you have enterprise funds, or special revenue funds, like, the school has special revenue funds, we have enterprise funds. These are, these funds are for cer, certain activities, for certain things only, for, you know, the water is for the water function. Now, you are going to pay for everything associated with the cost of providing water or sewer. And what, what happens is, the taxation that you see, or the, what we raise in the rate, goes to subsidize, subsidize the general fund, it's a pass-through. So in the end, you're not getting double taxed, the, the water users are paying for the health benefits of the water employees. It's raised in the general fund, but it's offset by the money coming in that you see on that revenue sheet, that offsets that expense. Unless you.
I'm not quite sure.
You kind of almost need a flow chart to see.
The only thing I can see is that you have a captured audience that is being charged extra money to pay for something for employees who are going to get it anyways, because they're town employees.
Well, if this was a, if, if you didn't have an enterprise fund, if you were, if you were funding the water, all the water, all the work in the, done by the water department in the general fund, you would, it, it would have the same net effect, there's no difference.
So it would be more equitable, actually, if we just dissolve the enterprise accounts?
No, it wouldn't.
You're not charging them any extra.
No, but just on that particular thing, but the, you're, you're charging rates that pay for everything. They pay for, they pay for your water repairs, they pay for your employees, it pays for their retirement, it pays for everything. That's what you're paying on the rate. The taxpayers are not paying for those employees, because our tax rate is offset by the money that we're transferring in for the cost of these benefits. So, it's only being paid for in one place.
I'd like to see some documentation of that sometime when you get a, I know you're busy, but you know, I would appreciate to see some documentation that this money is being generated in the general fund and being transferred, as opposed to assessing the users' fees.
Right, it's right, it, it shows up right on the town's recap sheet.
Not that I don't trust, I just want to see it.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I don't understand it, we're showing here, that, that it's coming out of the general fund.
Right, well, what, all you have to think of is, you see it in the budget over here, it's being raised as a revenue here, and the revenue comes from the other place, that.
There's just so much of that, it's pot here, pot there, pot there, you know.
Municipal finances like that.
Put it down in one place, so it's clear.
Yeah.
And able to understand, because I, I think it should be a little more straightforward, that's all.
Mm-hmm. Well, the, you can, you can certainly, the only way to really do that, in the way that, that you're speaking of them, is you get rid of the enterprise funds, but then you have taxpayers supporting services that own, that aren't necessarily town-wide.
We do that all the time.
Well, we do, but.
School department runs totally on general government.
Yep.
All right, so, I mean, I'm saying that why, why it's in general government, just pick up the tab and do it and get it over with. Is that a whole set of bills you won't have to send out for the water department, wastewater? Look at these things, a lot of stamps, 45 cents each.
But wouldn't that be grossly unfair to persons who are not receiving town water or town sewer?
Absolutely.
But who are paying for their own water and own sewer?
I mean.
Now, if someone were to suggest that people with private wells and private septic systems would have the town pay for their septic system and well, you know, that might be nice.
Or you can move into town and take over a place that has on the septic system. You won't have to worry about your, your well and your septic system.
On the other hand, people who live in town could do without town water and town sewer, and pay for their own. Fair is fair, there's really nothing mysterious about it, the fact is that an enterprise fund is designed where a certain segment of a population receives a benefit, and it's only fair and equitable that the segment of the population who receives the benefit pay the cost of that benefit. Now, of course, the town is, in fact, subsidizing the people on water in town sewer. Now, of course, the town is, in fact, subsidizing the people on water and town sewer by virtue of the fact that when they borrow money, the enterprise fund doesn't borrow the money. In which case they'd pay a higher rate of interest. All the taxpayers are paying, you know, they're taking advantage of the lower interest rate by virtue of the fact that it's borrowed by the general obligation of the town to pay it back. Rather than the bonding company looking at the credit rating of the agency only to pay back the money.
But the fund, the funds, the funds are charged-
Yes, that's correct.
With that debt.
Yes.
Now, how long have we been doing it this way?
We've been doing this since the early nineties.
Really?
Yep. I've, I mean, I've worked for towns that have done it both ways. In the end, the accounting is slightly different, but in the end, it's all the same. What, that, what winds up happening though, without an ent, when you don't have an enterprise fund, when your water and sewer fall under the general fund?
Yeah.
Um, it's virtually impossible to maintain the infrastructure.
Now, do you think that when we do this thirty million dollar repair to the water treatment plant? Is it just the people who are on the system are going to pay for it?
Well, that'll, at, at that particular point, that'll be a matter, that'll be a matter for the water and sewer commissioners to take up. And that's going to be, that's going to be very dependent on a lot of factors. Cost, service, uh, whether it's considered to be a town-wide benefit versus an in, an individual benefit for the ratepayers.
Yeah.
You know, the term that we're going to do with the interest rate, whether we'll get a no interest or a two percent. There's going to be a lot of factors figuring into that and that'll, that'll be a, a very healthy discussion to have at that point.
Sure it will, because I'm getting ready for it. Uh, I, I think it's, um, a benefit, but it don't, it does benefit the ones that are on it, but we didn't ask to be on it either. When they first went through town, we were ordered to get on it.
Mm-hmm.
Or else we were penalized.
Right.
So it's one thing to get, get there because you got a gun to your head, but that's just what it was. So I, I think that, the other thing, we should go the other route. Right, guys?
Shut it off through the well, through the septic, huh?
Uh, the thing is that actually if we just shut down the plant, we'll all stop paying for it.
Okay.
Different idea.
Different, yep.
Is the plan then with any money that we do have extra, try to go into the capital or go through, I mean?
Yes.
If, I know your projections aren't anywhere, what we're kind of doing is-
The goal, even for FY thirteen, which we're in now, has been to put extra into capital. I mean, right now, uh, at town meeting, we, we moved a little over eighty thousand dollars into capital. There is more funds available in the new town debt line that is municipal only. That, that, that's another place where we put, because as part of, one of the things with the revenue share agreement is new debt incurred by either the municipal departments or the school department is covered by that agency. So we put money in there as well because we, because I ran, ran into a problem last year with the finance committee with transferring money out of there if it went in. So we've basically parked it in a different line where, assuming everything works out, if there's no department shortfalls, as we get toward, towards the Spring Town Meeting, that money would also be transferred into capital and be used to, to make some capital purchases on a one-time basis. But according to this calculation, as we stand right now, going, going into fourteen, it will not be available. That question that was created this year is going to be used up next year.
I know we talked about this earlier, the, the sale you just had. Now that's-
Mm-hmm.
That sits, where will that money sit? In case, was that like?
That money, like the money that, that wound up being certified in fiscal two, at the end of fiscal two thousand and twelve, it will be surplus receipts that will flow into free cash at the end of the fiscal year. Um, so, I mean, roughly, I, I really didn't look too hard at it, but I believe we did a, we did a bit over three hundred and fifty thousand Thursday afternoon. Um, for some reason, three eighty-seven keeps staying in my head, but I'm, I can't confirm that. I've got a spreadsheet at the office. But that money will, will flow at the end of the year, uh, into free cash and then into stabilization. You know, our, our thought really is that'll be, that'll be fine to off, offset any snow and ice deficits we wind up with this year. And if, if things go right, we should still have at least two point six million in stabilization at the end of fourteen. So that bodes very well for us because we will be doing, that, we will be doing a borrowing next fall for the school project, the school fields, the, uh, um, the ambulance body and the, uh, the fire equipment. All of that went out on temporary borrowing until next November. So that should certainly help our bond rating when we do the rating call next year.
What's the benchmark on, uh, kind of percentage of your overall budget that you want to have in stabilization?
Um, well, through the financial policy, the first benchmark was a million dollars. That was the minimum. The second benchmark was five percent of the general fund budget, which rough, would be roughly one point eight million dollars. Um, we are well past that now at two point six. The, the only problem with that is the temptation is to then take that money and use it. Use it for municipal purposes, use it for educational purposes, but, um, we don't, we don't support that. Uh, we're more, we would more prefer to see it used for mutual pro, mutual issues. Snow and ice, unemployment, which we, we've gone into a couple of times for, um, an unforeseen health insurance deficit. Um, if you want, if anything having to do with natural disaster or what have you. Um, we would like, we would prefer to see stabilization be used for those purposes rather than spend it back down to one point eight million dollars.
What's, what's our average, uh, in the, say, the last ten years? Snow and ice deficit that we, that we pull out of there?
Probably about two hundred and seventy-five thousand a year.
Well, actually, it was our best year.
Yeah, boy, it wasn't ever. But it averages about two seventy-five. At some point, it's been up to three fifty.
So if we were not to add money to stabilization in ten years, it would be zero? Typically, how do we replenish the snow and ice deficit?
Um, typically, we have, we have, we have two methodologies. We can raise it on the recap sheet and have it affect operating budgets for the following year, or you can take it out of stabilization. What we've been doing up, up to this point is we've taken it out of stabilization. I believe we put it on the recap sheet once. The rest of the time, we had enough free cash basically to offset it, uh, with the exception of last year, which fortunately, we didn't have a deficit either. We didn't have much free cash, but, um, so that worked out okay. I mean, our goal at this point is to, is to protect the two point six as best as possible.
Was it oh sixteen or seventeen that the school additions come off?
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen. Thought it was closer.
Time doesn't always-
You were hoping, right? You were hoping.
Calendar two thousand and seventeen, you can look at it.
Yeah. It's closer.
So in regards to next year's budget and based on the fact that you have the, you've identified the shortfall of revenue, what, if any, um, input or priority prioritization areas or general discussions about two thousand and fourteen, do you think is important for the board to weigh in on?
Well, I think it's, I, I think the board should weigh on, weigh in, um, and on a list of priorities on, in any given fiscal year. I, I think when we're beginning to craft a budget, it would be helpful even if the board had standing orders. Based, okay, in the case of a shortfall, this is the top line item that we would, we would want to look at. This is the second, this is the third. In the case of surplus, these are the items that we would like to fund first. It certainly would make it easier in crafting the budget, even this beginning, big, beginning analysis. We would know exactly what areas the board have pri, has priority on. And that discussion can take place at any time during a fiscal year. I mean, you, we can, we can have them in the middle of the summer, just as an exercise to see what are the board's priorities, assuming a level funded budget. Into deficit or into surplus, what would be, what would be the priority?
I think one of the things we're coming tonight with is a, we're supposed to come with kind of a list of priorities as individuals related to, uh, focus areas from a service perspective, I think, more so than whether it was a surplus or a deficit at this point. Just because it's too hard to read.
Sure.
I think that's what you asked us to clarify.
Yeah, well, just where we thought our priorities would be. I mean, I know roads are a big priority in this town. And then from there, what everyone thought of is, if we have a surplus, where could we go? If we don't, where do we take from? That's-
Well, one of the things that re, piques my interest, and we had a brief conversation about this the other day, was when we look at the amount of cash that's in stabilization, if the five percent is one point eight million, is there an opportunity to put, uh, on the table projects that require investment such that we're essentially borrowing against stabilization, against our own cash, that would ultimately provide a return in five or ten years down that we should be looking at? And we've talked about maintenance issues related to kind of windows and heat loss and potential savings associated with that. There's been discussion about gas. There's, um, there's projects like of that nature that are interesting if they're in the smaller end of the capital range. Uh, and, and we have some short-term, uh, surplus and stabilization that we might be able to just essentially borrow the money from ourselves and get it back in a point that we're not leasing stabilization.
But, but, jet, just, just aside, you got to be careful in that respect. Because if it's used for a particular purpose, be it a municipal purpose or be it an educational purpose, you're then, you're then beginning to run afoul of the revenue share agreement. And that's, that's where, that, that, that's the, that's probably the main negative that I can come up with, with the revenue share is. It keeps everybody honest, it keeps everybody playing on the same level field, but at the same time, it does not allow for that type of thing unless you're actually divvying up funds. So for instance, if we wanted to say, okay, we're going to replace the windows at town hall, it's two hundred thousand dollars. Um, at that point in time, the fair thing through the revenue share would be to make two hundred thousand dollars available to the school department as well for their purpose, for their type of purposes. Not saying we couldn't do it, not saying that it's nothing that we can't discuss, but just bear that in mind that it's, it's, everything's split when we do this.
Sure, and that's a fair point. But be, before we even get to the point of how much money we need to worry about filtering through the revenue agreement, is there a business case to be made that says, go out and replace the windows in town hall? Like, can we get enough savings in a ten-year window or an eight-year, upon intended, uh, period? To ultimately, you know, can we save that money in heating costs? Or are we just?
I mean, you can see a savings, I'm not su-
So when do we recoup on the savings?
You know, usually the window's a lot larger, you know, it's a lot, it's a bigger window, especially when you're looking at, you know, just using that example, we don't only have the window issues, we have insulation, we have, we have all of that. So the windows are very, are very costly, but they certainly might not by themselves generate enough return to pay it back over an acceptable period of time. And right now, any, 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 anything we'd be doing would be fairly speculative on it. Generally, I mean, generally, there, the replacements that we've done have not been with a break-even stand, haven't had to do with break-even. It's, you know, when we replace the-
Had to do with broken.
Yeah, when we had the boilers downstairs, we had, you know, with the four houseboil, boilers that we had downstairs. Those needed to go. Um, and we brought, we brought in more efficient boilers. But generally, we don't see enough savings to, to pay back for a project of that particular magnitude.
How about a combination of converting to gas and windows?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that would be pretty substantial.
Uh, that, that's a possibility, but, you know, if you, it, I mean, use, I mean, we're probably on the wrong example, but even a borrowing like that is probably more suited to be floated through a bond issue and being paid for through the municipal appropriation. You take two, two or three hundred thousand dollars over a ten-year period, you're talking thirty thousand dollars a year. On it, you know, plus a little bit of interest on a municipal appropriation, that's probably a lot easier to manage than actually pulling it out of stabilization and dealing with everything that you're dealing with at that particular point. You know, right now, you hate to say it, but right now borrowing is so cheap. You're better off borrowing and holding on to that, that money for some, something that, that could be, you know, more immediate or catastrophic going down the line.
Jay, if you come in some morning, go into the board of health office. The temperature will be ninety degrees and the windows are open. Now, for two dollars worth of Reynolds Wrap, you take the cover off the radiation and put aluminum foil over the fins and put the cover back, you'll save money. Because all the heat is going out the window. So it doesn't necessarily take a lot of money to effect some savings. Situations like that have been going on year after year. The fact is that there isn't anyone in charge. There is no one who was looking at these things on a day-to-day basis. And nothing gets done. If, if something falls from the ceiling, something is done. But if something is just wasting away and people, well, it's always been that way and it never gets fixed, that's what happens.
We have identified that, what we think, short of a quick fix like Peter, Peter mentioned, but there's, um, that we just, we're going to have the plumbing inspector take a look. There are valve, there are zone valves for each zone in, in this bill, building. Generally, when you have a section of the building and it's that, it's that office there as well as the office adjoining it, you have a problem with one of the valves being, being stuck. So I'm actually in the process of looking into that. I'm going to have our plumbing inspector see what his knowledge of the system is and see if that's something that we can take care of. Because that has happened in the past. We have had, from what I can tell, based on our, from our boiler maintenance, we have had those issues and we have been able to identify. The problem can be getting someone in who knows, uh, how the system works. It's part of the problem that we had downstairs in recent memories, because the technicians that were coming in from irons, looking at those boilers down there, hadn't installed it. They, on a daily basis, they deal with any different num, number of systems. And so this one day, we had two technicians in here all day, we weren't charged for it. And, but half of the, half, half of one technician's day was simply spent doing research as to what was installed down here, how it all actually works together. Then, once they figured that out, then they could explain to us how it, how, how it works. And then it was easier for them to actual, actually start troubleshooting. So I can sort of say that I am attempting to address that particular situation that you mentioned, so.
But up, upstairs is a little bit different because you have, uh, heating units that go from one room to another. But the thermostat is in one room. And the heating goes to two rooms. It's a very simple thing to have valves that can bypass the heat, hot water, from a room that doesn't need it, controlled by a thermostat in that room. This is not brain surgery, this is not rocket science, this, we don't need to invent anything new. It's just very simple things, and it's the simple things that just, for some reason I can't comprehend, never ever get done. But that's not the thrust of the issue. I've been hearing the same song and dance for about twenty years, way before your time. And this is the third meeting we've had now on revenue projections. And it's a waste of time. If you look at the revenue growth in the town of Fox Bridge, it's a fairly constant thing. There are some ripples, but it's fairly constant. We cannot predict with great accuracy the, whether the revenues we're going to have in a, in a particular year. We know with great accuracy the costs that we have. And we know for a fact that we are not meeting the- And we know for a fact that we are not meeting the reasonable needs of the community. We know those things. And we know that the only way to meet on a continuing basis the reasonable needs of the committee is to look at how we're spending the money and make adjustments in those things. Now, David mentioned that, um, workman's comp is going up. That's a, has a direct correlation to the number of employees, correct?
Uh, no, it, it's actually ba- based on our experience, our losses.
Yeah, it's a function of how many employees you have and what they do.
And what happens to them, yep.
What happens to them, yes. Every vehicle we, we put, we add on to the fleet, the cost goes up. And these things just happen by themselves without really the, the scrutiny that needs to be given. We have to look at every department, we have to know what their required functions are and what their functions that they do that might be nice but are not required. And we need to know what those various things cost. And then we need to determine whether or not we're doing those things in the most efficient and effective way possible. And we cannot do that if we wait until the end of December to start delving into these things. I remember one year Bruce was running for reelection. And I asked him the question, one of the four, and, when are you gonna start working on the budget? And his answer was, as soon as they, as soon as we get, as soon as after the election, that's when we're gonna start. But of course, we didn't. And we haven't.
Takes five.
And we're never gonna do it, never gonna do it, if we keep up going the way we are. But David is right, it's our job to determine priorities. It's our job to allocate the resources, at least those resources that are part of the municipal government rather than the school budget. That's our job. It's not David's job, it's not the manager's job. It's our job. And we need to make those decisions so that when people are upset, they can come to us and blame us and we don't shuffle the blame onto the manager or David or somebody else. That's our job.
Peter, what are some of the reasonable needs that aren't being met?
Staffing.
So we can just get, so we can drill into the specifics and-
We're not maintaining the roads and, and the bridges that we, to the extent we need to. We're not maintaining the buildings to the extent that we need to. You know, I mean, there's no, there's no mystery about-
Even the sidewalks.
Even the sidewalks.
You can't even take a walk without, uh, walking through areas that haven't been, you know, clayed or that we've paved.
Now, some of that is because that we know the state's gonna come and redo, you know, the main street, you know, be part of that project. Uh, but you're right, there are plenty of places where the sidewalks are heaving up and the roots are growing over them and so forth. But it's, what happens is, in reality, we get, we know we don't have enough money to do these big things. So we squirrel away all the money we have on little things, you know? That's human nature, that's what happens. But you have to fight against that.
Well, if you read the, if, when you read the reading file, if you look in there on staffing, they've been complaining for, since I've been here about the wastewater division or water division not having enough people, the DPL, DPW not having enough people. Do we have not enough some places and too many in other places? That's something we need to look at, too.
The number of people you have is a function of what we're doing. So to the extent we do things that we are not required to do, or that we're doing because we think it's good, how good is it? You see, everything is a choice. It's no different between the municipality and private individuals or businesses. Everything is a question of choice. What's important and what's not important.
Starting at that topic, we have a series of departments.
Yeah, certainly welcome some assistance in that vein, because in my looks at the budgets and the previous budgets and my discussion with the finance director, um, I don't know, I'd certainly welcome some suggestions as far as, uh, where you think departments are doing, performing services or activities that they don't necessarily need to. I certainly haven't really been able to identify much of that. Certainly, I, I don't know, staffing, I, I don't know where, where in town is overstaffed.
I'm saying, so far, there's some, some places are so far understaffed compared to having, having a-
Granted, but I don't think that the, I don't, I, that's granted. I don't know that we're, that we're fat somewhere else, is what I'm saying, so I don't-
Well, we're fat in other places than we are in some places. Some places we're really short. Because when a, when a, well, you take, you have to take into condition, like a sidewalk plows. One, are they serviceable, are they gonna use them? Do they have the people to use them? I've seen them go down Heckler Street and go right past the sidewalks and drive all the way down there without even going over the sidewalks. If you're gonna drive right by them and go do other sidewalk, why don't you just drive right down the sidewalk?
There's a management person, I think his name was Drucker, Peter Drucker, does that ring a bell? Um, Mike Ronan gave me this quote from Drucker. He said, "Nothing is more wasteful than making more efficient something that should not be done in the first place."
So if we look across the major buckets, Sean, right? We have, um, library, David, town clerk's office, uh, DPW, police, fire, senior center, library. What are the other major buckets that I'm flying off?
Water division, did you already say that?
Water and water sewer.
Water sewer.
And then there-
Water sewer doesn't count for this discussion.
That's, 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 yep.
But even then, we have an interest in efficiency and effectiveness in those departments.
Of course. But not, not when it comes to balance, it's about, but yeah.
At this meeting, at the water sewer commissioners meeting. So in, in your assessment of the operation, you know, just at the high level, right? We know that the library and the senior center aren't required by law, right? So I think, yeah, those would fit into the non-required government services piece, right? That we're doing, that we don't have to do.
We're not required to have those agencies. However, there's more to it than that. You can have an agency that you're not required to have and still have it do functions that we think are very important in deserving support. But again, there too, we have to look at everything they do and say, what do they do that really isn't required? And how much does it cost?
And then in the town's clerk's office, how much of that is required?
Same thing, yeah, I agree, same thing in the town clerk's office. How much is required, not, we do, just because we're being nice.
And things that are required. The number of those things increase all the time. Because the state puts things, burdens on town departments to do that should properly belong to the state. They have the, the personnel, the knowledge and so forth. And, uh, you know, from time to time, I suggest that the board invite our senators and representatives and get from the departments in our own information, things that the state has transferred to us that we think properly belong at the state level. Because they can be done more efficiently there. For years, we used to have our own sealer of weights and measures. And the state has taken over that function. Now, so we're not bothered with that anymore. They have people who are skilled and have the equipment, they go and check all those things. The DPW, they probably still have it, you know, that trailer that has the things to check in the gas. They have quarts and gallons and so forth, and they pour gas in it. I mean, that was all, was done locally and was very inefficient. It was quaint, but not efficient. And the, uh, board of health is being harangued all the time by state agencies to do this and do that and do the other thing. And we are not capable of doing those things.
So how do we get specific? How do we get into these specific lists?
Well, I mean, within the budget books that the board gets every year, all the duties that are being done by the departments are broken out and listed.
Well, duties aren't broken out. What's broken out are the expenditure for-
Oh, no, no.
Equipment and so forth.
No, there's duties, there's duties in the budget books every year.
In very cryptic form.
No, in the back, in the back of every budget, you have a data sheet that shows your historical staffing, the mission of the department, and all the services that, that they provide.
Oh, yes.
You know, one at a time.
Yes, okay.
So.
But you need to know exactly what those services are and exactly what they entail. Because every department is gonna puff up the importance of their thing. Everyone wants to have a mission statement nowadays. It's go grandiose, it's gonna save the world from disaster. But we have to look at it in a different way. What are the real things that you do? What does it take to do them? Do we need to do them? How much does it cost to do them? And what will happen if we don't, if we don't do that much of that particular thing?
The problem you run into is probably the least popular, for lack of a better word, or the departments that don't have the followings are the ones that are required by mass general law. Your treasurer collector, your accounting, your, you know, most of the town hall offices are, for lack of a better word, unless, they are what they are, they're overhead. They're overhead cost to provide the basic government services that are required by mass general law. So once you throw general government out, or the, the vast majority of general government out, you're, you wind up with DPW and public safety. All, you know, we know DPW has issues, public safety has always had issues, but we've managed to fund public safety. So if you put, if those are aside, there's not much left after that. Then you're back down into these departments that we've been talking about and, uh, you know, small budgets like Pout Pond, border health, veterans agents, you know, they get, it gets pretty small. And, and that's, that's really where, where the problem is. In looking at the challenges that we have, especially having to do with roads and, and departmental equipment, it's pretty easy, as Peter said, to, to squirrel away a little money and take care of some of the low-hanging fruit. To get to something bigger, to get a roads program back that existed here back in 2002, I mean, you're talking a major expenditure. For instance, you know, even the, even the money that we have sitting this year, if that was all transferred over to highway, you know, Ben said he could spend it in, in two days and it wouldn't make a difference. Finding sustainable things going forward, you know, funding to sustain these programs, that's really where the challenge is going to be.
Yeah, so it, it sounds, you know, that's the thing that I have a hard time just wrapping my head around is you've got a list of reasonable needs, what, unarguable, right? Roads, conditions, and some are terrible, the sidewalks, everything that was called out was example. You've got, um, high-ticket items and you've got-
Low-ticket pocketbook.
Yeah, you get a chicken carcass that you're trying to pull a giant piece of meat off.
Yeah, right. But it-
So.
Longer it goes unattended, the higher the-
That's the problem with making something a priority now that hasn't been a priority for years and years and years. The constant argument, uh, it's not an argument, it's the hazards of having to prioritize. You decide that I'm gonna do this this year, I'm gonna put this off this year. And every time you put it off, it puts off, it puts off, and then the cost of actually getting it done, the basic cost of getting the condition fixed has now increased. And not only that, the condition that you had assessed five years ago now has itself deteriorated, which it, it keeps adding to the cost.
Equipment never, is never going down, not in any year. Each time we need to buy equipment, it's always gone up.
But people do have to make serious changes in their lives. You know, I, I don't know any family that in the last three or four years hasn't faced the prospect of making real changes in, in how they operate. And, because they don't have a choice. And we really don't have a choice. We're subject to the same, same pressures. But it's, it's very hard to get the will to do the things that need to be done. Because inertia is a very powerful force.
And not just here, there are, I mean, there are no towns in, whether situated like Uxbridge or not, that fix sidewalks. Walk and Run in Worcester, sidewalks are terrible, tree roots, whatever. You know what I'm saying? It happens everywhere. You don't drive through any town and see extensive road construction doing, people do, the towns do what we do. We wait for the funds to come hopefully from somewhere else, or we try to get some matching funds or whatever, and that's what happens. And we fix, they fix what they can with the resources that they have avail- available. I mean, it's, it, the thing I don't want to get lost here is that we're not unique and that's sort of, I-
No, that's correct, absolutely.
This isn't, this is, this isn't just our own, our own little pocket of dysfunction here in Uxbridge, unfortunately.
Everything's a function of human nature, and human nature operates all over the world and throughout history. There's no change in human nature.
So to try to undo what has been done, what has taken 15 or 20 years to do, to try to undo that in one year, can't, can't be done.
Well, I'm not proposing that we undo it in one year. I'm proposing that we need to look at things from a different perspective. And year after year, just concentrating on revenues and making do and sliding by, to me, is not the best way to handle it. But you're not gonna do that by starting in the middle, the end of December.
It's a wash, 14's a wash, let's start on 15 right now. We got a year and a half, we got a year and a half ahead, right?
You can do that.
It sounds like they've got a plan to, that they've been worked out, the numbers. So if, if we, if, if you feel strongly.
They have, they have a, they have a plan, it's called least action, which is, you know, fine, I'm not, I'm not-
I wouldn't say that's our plan, but-
It's what their plan is.
Without any bump in the road, right?
They've got a, a set way of approaching 2014. Just call it that and be a little more neutral on it. So for 2015, um, when you say, let's take a different perspective on that. But how do we peel back the onion another layer and say, all right, what's step one in looking at it different? And I, I think if I heard you before, it's, let's dig into the process of how they're-
Dig into the details. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? Do we have to do it? What does it cost and what's the benefit?
And so you, we wanna do that for all the departments across?
Well, I see no reason to leave one out.
Do you have a prioritization? Well, my concern is you've got five, is this something that you're, you're suggesting the board do the actual investigation and digging in ourselves on, or?
The board, yes, yes.
So you've got five people who work on a part-time basis at the board to cover, I don't know how many processes or department, you know, departments' time processes we have. Is there a reasonable expectation that we can get this done by the end of 2015?
Well, we used to do those things.
Sure.
But we didn't meet just every other Monday. You know, we're kind of in between, uh, sometimes we went to a weekly schedule until we get some of these matters resolved. But we didn't leave it for every other week. Because it does take a lo-, you know, there's a lot of putting in and throwing it out as far as, uh, how we're gonna approach it.
This is information gathering, this isn't meeting stuff, this is simple, I mean, it would seem to me you could task the manager with something like that, it's sort of underlying what you said, but you don't have any faith in that.
I think, I think you missed the point.
Human nature being what it is and the fact that we're, I'm, I'm, I'm doing as little as I can. You sort of implied, right, that we are doing as little, our least action policy-
Least action is something different.
That you're not gonna get the true numbers.
Least action means, how do I accomplish what I need to accomplish in the most efficient way? That's least action, it's not a, um, pejorative term. But it's a major difference. The period that Tim is talking about is a period when members of the board, usually you'll have two, three members of the board that've been on the board for six, seven, nine years. And they used to sign the warrant. So they had a real in-depth knowledge of where the money was going.
This is pre-charter?
Um, yes, pre-charter.
Couldn't my office help in it? Do you not see a role in the town manager's office to help you?
Oh, sure.
Gather this information?
Sure, sure. But you see, we, we all have, we're all individuals, and we look at things a little bit differently. And that, that's important, because you might pick up something that I missed, I might pick up something that somebody else missed. But if you don't know where the money is going, you don't have any idea of what's happening. The old expression, follow the money. Last week, I wanted to get back into looking at budgets and so forth and expenditures. And apparently, we don't have that ability now with this new system. So if you wanted to, you couldn't do it. But we need to fix that, and board members need to realize that that's really part of our job. You can't make executive decisions if you don't have the basic understanding. And having five different perspectives is very important.
I, I, yeah, I disagree with you on that, Peter, there's lots of executives who don't know the detail of every single process depending on, on the organization, even at an organization of this size. So there is a trade-off of, presumably, you hire good people you trust to give you good information and for things that you're not sure if, yeah, there's certainly cases you wanna go and follow up, but I wouldn't say everything you do is based on doing a deep dive. You can't be jack of all trades.
You're not gonna have five people equally knowledgeable in every department. Now, let's go back to the finance committee. There was a time when we had a functioning finance committee. Where finance committee members knew every aspect of a particular department that they specialized in. And no department head could pull the wool over their eyes by, you know, some computer presentation, because they would be stopped short. We don't have that anymore. And, and that's one of the problems.
We used to have the finance committee, two members come in almost every meeting, and prior to the meeting, go through all the bills on the warrant, and we would actually pull bills if none of us could answer the question on them. And it would be put on the next warrant. But if they questioned anything, we did something about it, we stopped it until we got an explanation on it.
And over time, you gain knowledge. It doesn't happen right away, but over time, you get, you're used to seeing certain things, and then you look at, oh gee, I thought this used to be eight thousand, how come it's fourteen thousand now? Then you find out what it is.
It sounds to me anyways that you're describing a, a lack of confidence in the people that do that for you.
No one does that for us.
And you're trying to, and you're trying to overcompensate it by taking everything on yourself, and it's just not a scalable model with a board of five members who aren't, you know, employed full-time to do this.
It, it, it's not how it is, Tim.
Jay.
Jay.
It's more embarrassing to let something go through and not even be aware of it. You know, by not knowing what's going on. And that's what we used to do, was know what was going on.
Let me give you one, just one example. Some years ago, Dan Stefano, I was on the school committee, he said that they made a contract and they, they got a new vendor to replace all the existing copy machines. And it was a lot of money. It was, I remember the bill, it was like ten thousand dollars a month. And then if we went over the amount of printing, it was an extra amount. And when Dan was telling me the, the benefits of the new system, he said everybody would have a code to put in when they made copies. So he would know what department is making all the copies. Okay, gee, that's a good idea. Well, about six months into this, or maybe it was longer than a year into this, I happened to notice the bill for the overage, and it was fourteen thousand dollars. And I asked, gee, how many copies do we get, you know, with the standard contract? And they researched and found out it was a number that equate, equated to four thousand copies per student. We got that as part of the basic contract. And then, of course, we went over by twelve thou, fourteen thousand dollars, or that was more. So then I asked Dan, I said, Dan, oh, he looked at it, he said, gee, I didn't realize it was that much. I said, wait a minute, you told me that one of the benefits of this new contract was that you would know who's making the copies. And now you're telling me that you don't know, you didn't know it was that much, although the superintendent, he would sign the bills every month. So you see, people are supposed to do something. What happens in reality, real life? I assume he's gonna do it. He assumes he's gonna do it, and he assumes he's gonna do it. And in the, you know, nothing gets done. No one's looking at it. And none of us are gonna look at everything. But if you go through it from time to time, you will acquire knowledge, and that knowledge will give you good insight as to the operations of the departments. It's not your only source of information, but it is a very good source of information.
But I think it does happen to some degree. I think I might have been accidentally the one who found the discrepancy, or I noticed some discrepancy, I don't know if it was Blanchard or the Blanchard School, the electric bill or something else, because I look at every single warrant, I look at every, and I ask every warrant, I go down and I ask the accountant a question about something, because something sticks in my head and it seems like it's an anomaly.
Sure.
Whatever, so that is done
Yeah.
in as much as it can be, Peter, I think.
But you won't catch everything. That's correct, you won't catch everything.
But we also have, we also have accounting doing it as well.
Accounting, accounting looks at, do I have all the proper signatures and so forth?
No, accounting also checks, they check against contract as well.
Yep, yep. But once something is set in place, it tends to go automatically.
Um, not necessarily though, because we.
I didn't say necessarily.
We review as they come in, we reviews the bills to make sure, because that's where, we've, we uncover a lot of billing discrepancies as we go. Like, for instance, right now, we have this, uh, we have this issue with, with the historical budget, where we found out that they've, that it appears that they've been being billed for a commercial light fixture that's not even theirs. And that we're, and we're interfacing with National Grid on that to get that corrected. This, I mean, this is what we do, especially, we have, we put a lot of time into accounting to make sure that the bills and the, the bills line up with the contract, we have the, the department head does the review, then, then it comes to the accounting department, they do a review, then after that, it gets passed on to Sean as well. So there's multiple layers that we're looking for that. Am I, is everything gonna get caught? No, absolutely not, but a lot do.
In the case you mentioned, the historic society or building, I think, which one? Did you, did you inquire of the department head, why'd that slip by them? Because they should know, they should go over the bill.
Right.
And say, gee, what is this about this light? Where is this light anyway?
Well, it's, it's, it's not a department, it's a committee.
Okay.
So.
But whoever's in charge.
Right.
You know, someone should approve a bill initially, has to be a person who would have actual knowledge that we receive the goods or services. And they sign, yes, we received this cotton of phasmistraces and it's, they're in good shape. And then it goes on. So nothing ever works perfectly, I understand that, it's never gonna be perfect.
Well, I guess if there's a department you have a question about, anybody, you could look at that department probably years, but we don't see it.
Well, we can't, no, because we don't have access to the computer.
This is, this is a action item then for.
It's a license purchase.
It's a licensing issue, and I have told, I, if, if, at this point in time, if you just request the report that you want, I can have it for you.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It's for you, it's, it's a simple licensing issue. As soon as we can figure out who we can take a license from, we'll issue you all passwords, you can access that at this, just, we're just trying to narrow down.
Is this isn't VEDAR anymore, is it?
No, this is KBS.
What was it?
KBS.
But this wasn't an issue with VEDAR?
No, because we had enough licenses going around with VEDAR, we don't have it for KBS.
What does it cost for a license?
They come in chunks of twenty.
Yeah, that's the problem. We're, we're, we're not gonna pay for it, we're gonna, we're gonna find, we're gonna find a way to get an extra license out of it.
There is gonna be a learning curve with this software too. This is a corporate software accounting that we're using now. KBS wasn't, KBS was very, very simple, very, very user-friendly, this is much more sophisticated. It's built for accountants, it's definitely less built for, for casual users. And so we're definitely, we're.
So is there a standard, I imagine.
So what was the, what was the unique benefit of buying this new software?
The unique benefit is the fact that VEDAR is not upgrading any of its systems, they're relying more on their side business with, of virtual town hall. And we've, we're not sure how much longer we are going to wind up having full support.
That's a reason to get away from VEDAR. My question is, what was the benefit of going to this new vendor?
Because they're, they're pretty much the only one in town after VEDAR. The only other, the only other good system that's out there that's been proven in the municipal marketplace is Munis, and we do not have funds for that.
It seems to me that it's an ideal situation where the state could provide municipal accounting software for all the communities to use in the same way that they provide the accounting for the elections and, you know, that, that part of it. I mean, it doesn't make sense for all these communities to use different kinds of, of software. If the state did it, they could generate the reports that they need instantaneously, they would all be, have the same format, it would be a lot easier. Another reason to have our representatives and our senators come and say, hey, listen, here's an idea that would benefit everybody, why don't you look into it?
The only state product that we use or that's available is the canvas system for the assessor. And that's, that's used by sixty-eight communities, but it's state-funded, that's all there is.
What does the town clerk use?
I'm sure, I'm sure she's gonna have statewide municipal software.
Well, they provide her with, the state provides her with computers.
We're just off, we're in a rat hole right now, which is fine to pursue our fine, but I think the original point that you're at, Peter, was we wanna get more visibility into these reports. And I'm trying to understand whether we've got a well-understood solution for what that is, that satisfies our existing licensing situation. So right now, the process is, there will be a request box today, you request Sean when you want, hey Sean, I'd like to see the warrant for.
You could call Justin as well, call the accountant.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that, but that's, that's inefficient, if I gotta disrupt somebody else, it's a lot more efficient for to.
Is there a way to produce a standard report on a regular basis to do this, or is this?
Well, we have standard reports for the finance committee, but they probably don't drill down to the detail that's being, that would be sought. I mean, we do a monthly report, the board gets it as well, but it does not have individual invoice detail at all.
And what you're looking for is individual invoice?
Well, you have a choice, because you, you could, you could specify what you're looking for. You could say, I wanna know how much we're spending with a certain vendor. You know, you, you had, you had the ability to really look at things and get the information in a very efficient way.
It sounds like we're, we're trying to get there, it's a licensing thing, but I'm trying, what's the, the stopgap measure between now and, and then?
Well, if, if the then is going to be a couple of weeks, there's no sense in a stopgap. If it's going to be six months, then maybe we better look at stopgaps.
Let, let us investigate it further to see if we can come up with a, a now rather than a then.
If you've been giving out financial reports every month, maybe you could come up with a couple of extras, because I haven't received any since July.
They go right in the, right in the, in the reading file.
They're about that thick.
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, we don't put them individually, but.
But I haven't seen one since.
It's in the reading file every, every month. Uh, you should, it's in the reading file through October right now.
I think Peter brought up a good point too, sometimes that is just as well on a read-only file as opposed to running out of so much paper. You know, and that's satisfactory to, to look at things and see what's going on, but you don't necessarily have to print it out.
Right, well, that's why we, we print one.
If I needed something printed out, I'd call Sean, right? No. Yeah, I said, oh.
I didn't hear the question.
I said, it, it could be on a read-only file on the computer. But if I wanted something printed, printed, I'll call you and say, I wanna see this, this document, not the whole thing, just that particular.
Sure, yeah, and I would ask Tracy, but I mean, I think we email most of, I know the read files.
Email.
They email to all of you.
Right.
I assume the reports, when I forward the monthly reports from the department heads, they're electronic. And I forward them to Tracy, and then Tracy forwards them to you, so.
They must be in a, in a stealth form, because I don't, I don't see them in. But I have seen them.
She, she scans them and puts them.
I can't say that I've seen them every month.
Okay, they're, they're done every month, but I can.
So can we take an action here, just make sure that those reports are in there and then we'll follow up with the, with the licensing issue?
What reports you talking about?
The monthly.
The monthly reports, just to make sure.
Yeah, Tim, certainly if like a couple of weeks or a month or something goes by and you don't get anything, let us know, because I'm sending them, I forward the department, I, I don't, it sounds as though most are getting them, but.
All right, so I'm just trying to keep us grounded as to where we are in this discussion. We discussed kind of looking at things different, we're, we're moving towards two thousand fifteen to, to really take a new approach to the budgeting aspect, right? I'm trying to summarize what I think I heard, is that correct, is every, every of that? And the proposed approach, which I'm not against, is, as Peter said, is, is to address each specific department, looking at processes, efficiencies, and requirements. Does it make sense from that approach to? How do you do that without having five people disrupt one person? You know, do we, do we, do we, do you recommend we, we delegate out two people per department? Or some stuff we, we put to Sean, I'm just trying to think of how, how do we now?
When I meant, okay, if I can interrupt you, when I was talking about assisting you, I meant in terms of, if you've got a time period, say, you know you're gonna wanna talk to the clerk or something. We could, I could help you schedule it out for a day or a week or something, and so to make sure that the clerk is A, prepared with information that you might want, and B, has the time set aside to actually physically meet with you, whether it's by phone or whether it's in person.
My, my.
So that's how I can help in terms of it's whoever chooses to do which department I can interface in terms of making sure.
This is kinda like an audit, right? And this is, an audit's like the most disruptive thing within an organization, so it's absolutely.
That's not what I have in mind.
Oh, all right.
And you'll get a lot of information if you read the reports from the different departments.
Sure.
I got a report from the library a couple of years ago, just statistics. And there was a line that said fifty percent of the people in Uxbridge use the library. Good.
Fifty percent of.
That means fifty percent don't. Okay, now that, see, that's very important information. A short time ago, there was a in a, in the reading file, a, a survey, a, a ten-year strategic plan of the library. And it was a survey that they took, and it was like eighty-seven pages. And they asked very detailed questions, what do you like, what you don't like, and what would, what you like to see, and what would you like to have more of, and so forth, and they gave you different answers. And the questions were very good. Would you like to see a, a cafeteria in the library? And many people said, yes. Would you like to have more hours on it? Yes. But the most important question was never asked, which is, you'd like to have a cafeteria? Yes. How much would you be willing to pay to have a cafeteria? You'd like the library to be open all day Saturday instead of half a day Saturday? Yes. Well, okay, how much would you like to pay for that? Because everything is a trade-off. Everything we do costs money, everything. So the question is, are we willing to pay for what we want? All of us walk into a store and we'll pick up some item that think, we think we might have an interest in, and then we look at the cost. and then we look at the cost. If the cost of this is five dollars, I might look at it and say, well, it's nice, but maybe later. If it's ten cents, I might say, you know, for ten cents, I'll take it because I'm willing to pay that cost. Now, with government, people who don't want to pay for something go to government, and they convince the government to pay for it through taxes. But that only works if everybody doesn't want it. Because if everybody wants it, there'd be no benefit to have the government do it. We'd all have to pay whatever the cost was, plus the administrative cost of a government handling the transaction. So if people aren't willing to do something, willing to pay for something, in another survey from the library, they're talking about C W Mars and the, the benefit of being able to get books from other libraries. The librarian said the estimated value of that is twenty dollars per request. And when I read that, I said, gee, you know, I used to ask for a lot of books from different libraries. Had I known it cost, was gonna cost twenty dollars, I would've said, no, no. Even though I'm not paying for it, I would've said, no, it's not worth twenty dollars for me. When I ask some clerk or some department head for some information, I always say, if it's a lot of work, you know, if you can do it in two minutes, that's okay. If it will take two hours, tell me and I, I don't want it. Because I know there's a cost to doing that. So I measure the importance to me versus the cost of doing it. And that's what we have to do.
So when you're saying this is not an, an audit per se, but to dig into the process and understand the cost of the, of, of the process.
Yeah, what do we do?
How, how do you?
How much does it cost?
How, how do you, how do we do this?
Well, in the case of the library, they, they provided all the information that I based my, my comments on. I didn't have to go and ask them for it. I just read the report that they on their own published, but read it and, and thought about.
Well, I'm just trying, so this is good, 'cause I, is this kind of a first step at this? Is to, to ask the department heads to develop this report on their, on their process? Just give us a report, not?
Yeah, I think they do, we do.
Even elaborate on the reports that they already give.
But like, yeah, perhaps give some feedback as to what's missing in the information we're getting.
Yeah.
Um, and, and dissect them, so we're.
If you could create, create a standard information request, that could be distributed to, to the departments, and then the departments could respond. And then based on the response, when, when the board reads those responses, the board could decide whether or not you wanna drill down into specific areas. At least you'd, you'd have a general starting point without, without tying yourselves up all the time here and traipsing in all the department heads. At least if you start in a paper format, at least it gives you an opening, beginning as to what direction you wanna go. So if we could standardize that into a questionnaire, that would probably at least give the board a starting point to work with.
I don't think every detail of the department you really need to know. I mean, you should know some of it. It's questions, if you wanna dig down, okay, you're spending this in what way? When you, by looking at, I, to me, there's certain departments in here that, um, even the police fire, you kinda know what they're spending, but if you wanna dig deep, you can go deep. I don't think you would wanna, you want every line from a, the fire department, police department?
Yeah, how, how would that, that's a good question. How would it work if we take hypothetically the police?
I would think that information would be on your read, read-only file. You don't need to, you don't have to mail it.
It will be. The expenses are broken down in different categories. And if you have a question, you can.
And then you could come up with your questions from that sheet.
Uh, I mentioned before, when I looked at the police expend, expenditures, I immediately caught my attention that they're spending, at that time, it was like thirty thousand dollars for electricity.
Electricity, yep.
In a new building. And I knew that the town hall electrical cost was about thirty fif, uh, thirteen thousand dollars. In an old building that's not insulated and has all these window air conditioners. Something is wrong. And I asked the chief about it, and of course, they always get very defensive. Um, well, we've had this, that, 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 I, I don't argue with that, but to me, there's still something wrongs. When a building this big costs this much, and a building this big, that's two hundred years old, costs one-third of that. Something is wrong, but I still don't know what it is.
So, so do you, do you think we need a standard information request as David's proposing? Or we just need to get the system up and running and?
If we get the system up and running, uh, that's your first, I mean, up and running from our point of view. That's the first step. And then from that, if you have a question specifically.
You can find the question you might want.
Get the answer to the question. And a lot of time, the question will be answered if you go and look at the particular bill.
Does that satisfy what we're trying to do here, though? 'Cause I feel like we've had that level of exposure and access in the past.
But it wasn't used by members. I mean, um, it, you know, you can have anything available, but if no one avails themselves of it, you know.
No one provides feedback on it, then the assumption, everything's good.
Yeah. When I go to the read file, you know, I read it and I'll make a note, and I'll sometimes circle something. I don't know if anyone else looks at the file itself. I just looked at it online. But by making notes on a particular file, you know, you can transmit information to others.
'Cause I, I'd really like to get to a point where we have a process on how we do this, how we capture things and, and raise them up. And nothing would make me happier to come back here on a Monday and, and feel like we're making progress towards doing this. But I'm not exactly sure how, how we measure that ourselves, that, that we're in fact doing this or not. And if there's a better way to have it done around state.
Time will tell, as we go along. And I think if we have a plan, we, we go see Sean, that's all.
Well, what I don't wanna happen is I don't wanna stay here two weeks from now, a year and two weeks from now, and have, you know, the common criticism of we're not doing our job.
Well, maybe the case, what are you gonna do?
Don't worry about it. We got nowhere to go but up.
With a level of sincerity, that, that's something that I think if, if the board is not effectively doing their job, I'd like to get away from Einstein's theory of insanity and keep doing the same thing over and over and hope the results change. So how do we take that different approach in this particular item of the financial budget? So at least we can say, hey, we didn't do our job, but we at least tried something different this time. And, and if, if by satisfying these requirements of getting access to this system and putting it more on the forefront, may, maybe do we, do we ask for a training session on the new system? To make sure we're proficient in it?
Absolutely.
Um, as, as another step?
Well, it, yeah, um.
Proficient.
It used to be that passwords would change all the time, and it's a real nuisance to get into the thing. If it were easy, that would be nice. But Jay, this is not a new problem. Even back in the days when the board supposedly had to sign the warrant, they had to have a quorum of signatures not to pay any bills. We were scrambling to try to find, you know, a third signature. So this is not unique. The school committee, they're supposed to sign the warrant. They wouldn't. They'd have to find somebody. And finally, they gave, they voted to let the chairman sign the warrant for them, which I'm not sure is quite legal, 'cause I have an opinion from the state to the effect that they, individual members have to sign it. But the fact is that they would sign it and never read it, and that they would, you know, make an offhand comment, well, we know Peter read it, and, and that's okay, we'll sign it. But that's not how it's supposed to be. Because I don't catch everything, somebody else doesn't catch everything.
So in February, we're up, January, February, we're up, we're reviewing this thing now. We got the training session, we're looking at it. How, how do we, how do we effectively, besides catching anomalies that may occur in the budget? And then perhaps taking that as a next step, we look at areas that say, jeez, that seems like an awful lot of money for what we perceive this department should be doing. Then, then we'll look into potentially having Sean help us assist in investigations into process.
Yeah, it's an incremental process where you, you work with the information you have, where there's something you think you don't have but need, you, you get it, and then that may confirm or change your, your outlook on something.
A good example of that is, is cell phone bills sometime. You know, if you look at bills, the cell phone bills on different departments, it just makes you question it sometimes. It's good to be able to look at.
Yeah, anything.
Well, how so? And cell phone bills, and cell phone bills are fixed.
You see it, well, it all depends how many they have, or whether they're using them for. You know, that's what I'm saying, that's why I like to look at the, the finance bill to see, okay, this, this department has a cell phone, or what do they have a cell phone for, what are they using it for?
I know, the department heads have cell phones, but like, you know.
That's the type of thing I'm talking.
Ben Sherman's got his, he has a personal cell phone as well. He's paying for it as well as the town. Bill carries, Bill Kessler carries too. Peter Emmerich doesn't even have a town self, cellphone. All the business he does on the cellphone, he pays for himself. So, yeah, I think, I mean, as much, and as much as we can control them, the cellphone bills are fixed, but the people who use them have their own personal phones too, so.
Yeah, but you can't always judge that.
The only time, and we would notice if that fixed bill changed on, at, at a monthly basis. Now it'd be because of whatever, somebody went over the minutes. Those kinda things I think are easy to, those are the ones that are easy to catch.
That's, that's what I'm saying. When you look at, you look at the computer, you can, you can catch that.
But, well, I guess what I'm saying is those are the ones that the accountant notices. Those are the ones that I notice, 'cause we see those same numbers every month. The stuff that tends to get missed is gonna be maybe obscure things, or the occasional, you know, rise in electric bill, but it's also gonna be that anomalous bill. That's something for the, you know, for a sort of, sort of a crazy amount.
That's something we'll develop too as we go along. I think it'd be worth a shot, and, and at least try it out and, and see if it doesn't help, help us all, um, come up with some ideas.
So what I've got is, uh, to end this.
Geez, all dubious.
Unless you have more, there's kind of five actions here. We've got kind of five steps. First is figure out the licensing situation. Uh, second is to, uh, once that's, I'm assuming in the meantime, we'll just have to use ad hoc methods to get this information as required. Second would be to schedule a training session on the, on the basics of the new stuff, just so we can not break anything. And then we should be looking into, uh, regular review of, of the bills and budgets, and then we have to set up a process for investigations, right? That's where we turn to the town manager and say, you know, the board has recognized this issue. We'd like to understand this better, figure out the, the process from there. Is that, I'm just trying to capture it, I don't wanna taint it or just screw it. Throw it away, I just wanna make sure we all, hey, this is what we said we're gonna do, but now we know we do it.
Okay, keep it simple. Three, two or three things, and I.
Cell phone, yeah.
Right? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thanks, David. Okay. Uh, what are the, let's see, public here, minute meeting minutes, eleven twenty-six.
Eleven twenty-six, page two. On the top of the page, there, there is an argument that sponsor should be reserved for indicating who initiated the article as defined in the town charter, Article Two, Section Seven A, currently being used, I mean, to describe the stakeholder, a town employee who holds the subject matter expertise on the article. Sponsor is not mentioned, that word sponsor appears nowhere in the charter. They talk about, uh, articles that the, the selectmen must put on the warrant, which are initiated by, and then they also use as the term petition. But the charter is silent as to when they use the word petition, that they use in the general term as a citizen's right to petition the government, or whether that term is used specifically for a petition to put an article on the warrant, which meets certain criteria, ten for an annual meeting and a hundred for a, um, special meeting. So sponsor is the perfect descriptive, perfect and accurate descriptive term for a person who requests the Board of Selectmen to put an article on the warrant. And in that case, we have the option, but are not obligated to put it on the warrant. The ones that come to us by virtue of the, the charter, as the charter specifies, we must place on the warrant. So I don't know what the change is.
Uh, there isn't a change. I think it was just a recap of.
And the last sentence, that the warrant will be submitted to the Attorney General's office for final approval. Attorney General doesn't submit, doesn't approve warrants. I don't know, I don't know where that came from.
The minutes of the, the minutes of town meeting, I think is what that meant, yeah.
It says a warrant will be submitted, okay. And then it was strongly recommended town council do a thorough review, but it doesn't say who strongly recommended it. I mean, none of this means anything, but it's just that if you look at this after the meeting and you say, gee, I wonder who it was that strongly recommended this, there's nothing to tell you. It's not worth changing the, changing it, but I just bring those things to your attention.
So we'll amend, uh, we'll change.
Minutes from town meeting, yeah.
And it was Ed, it was Ed Mahari who recommended that the, uh.
Oh, okay, so.
So we might as well document.
Yeah, you should document it. Then if you have a question, you might go to him and say, gee, why are you recommending this?
So I'll motion that we accept the meeting minutes from November twenty-six, two thousand twelve with the following changes. That paragraph under New Business Two be three reflect Mr. Ed Mahari as the recommender to do a thorough review of the articles with town council, and that the last, second to last statement revised to say, meeting minutes will be submitted to, sorry, yeah. Town meeting minutes will be submitted to the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, I mean, that's not something we, it's something we have to do. So I don't know, I mean, it sounds like something we decided to do. Doesn't make any difference.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
I, it would be extremely beneficial if the minutes were done the day after the meeting and then sent to us by email, and we can make any corrections at that time when it's fresh in our minds.
Take an action to.
I've been saying that for thirty years, so don't, um, go out of your way.
I'll go on it, so.
All right, the, uh, minutes of twelve-three.
I'm gonna type that, pass it to.
I'll move that the board approve the minutes of twelve-three, two thousand twelve.
Second, all in favor?
I.
All right.
I think I wasn't there.
I wasn't there either.
Any town manager updates?
I sent my report on Saturday.
I sent my report on Saturday.
That's right.
Member issues?
Let me just briefly give you an update on the town manager review. We, so Sean had forwarded on his, I've gotten Peter's, and Bruce's, and mine kind of integrated into a single document. I just grabbed Tim's and Pete's tonight, and so what I'm trying to do here is simplify all the comments into a single document.
Good luck.
It's actually, it's working okay. It's okay. And it's, so we're getting there with it. So I'll work, I'll continue to work on that. The reason why I bring it up is because to avoid the holiday schedule, we're planning our next meeting, I think, for next Monday. And what I wanted to do is, I do have specific questions, I just want to follow up with everyone who submitted a form, just to make sure I I understood your answer or selection properly, because ultimately, I'm trying to average the scores out, and if, like, Tim, you asked the perfect question, which is the zero mean. If I, if I write not observed, does that reflect negatively, or does that reflect as just a null, a dead? So I want to go back and just follow up with a couple, with a couple of you, just to make sure that I've captured that properly, and then average it out. And I'll have the summary written as soon as I have a chance to do that with everyone. But then we're gonna meet on Monday, and that doesn't give everyone enough time to review it, nor time to sit down with Sean and review it. I will, if the board thinks it's important that we do get it done Monday, cram it down if you think there's enough time to have a fruitful conversation and get it done Monday. But I think it would be beneficial if we consider doing the public review at the first meeting, or the next meeting after the seventeenth. I don't know when that's currently scheduled for now.
January.
Would you say again the part about we're supposed to sit down with Sean again?
No.
Individually?
No, part of the process, no, Pete and I are gonna sit with Sean and go through the collective responses and get his comments back. So that ultimately, when we come back and sit down and talk about the review, it's, I've included and had a chance to meet with you and get all your comments, and make sure I represent them properly in what we shared with Sean. We've gotten Sean's feedback in, so that we're kind of dealing with a final review product at that board meeting, as opposed to kind of having everyone shooting comments and taking, you know, two and a half hours to go through a review.
Yeah. Fourteen.
Fourteen.
On January.
So that process is just gonna take a little bit of time, and we, because we're on a short week here.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be tight. If if it's okay, I'd like to ask that we postpone it to January, just to give me a little more time to make sure I sit through it. But if everyone thinks it's important to kind of stick to this date, get it done in December, I'll.
January is good.
I'll follow up your New Year's Eve plans at all, right?
No.
Okay.
I'll be at your house, don't worry. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
But thank you all for bearing with the form. I think we have some work to do on.
The form.
On the form.
Do you have dates? When you wanted to accomplish this, the sit-down and then the formal, the public?
January fourteenth.
Is the next.
Is the, is the.
Meeting.
Is the meeting date.
Yeah.
I will go through it. I'll reach out, I'll reach out for individuals, just to follow up, just to find time, just catch up on the form, just, like I said, just want to make sure I understood the comment or.
Okay, is there no other issues? Like for motion to adjourn? Samuel?
Second.